This is a meeting of the regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 7:00 in our council chambers here in Bisbee, Arizona. Roll call this.
Councilmember Louis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacaminos excused. Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mel Sued?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chave, Police Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you. For tonight's moment of silence, I just want us all to reflect on the good things that happened in our city and the nonprofits that helped us and the people that volunteered for us and give them some thanks in return that they continue to serve us. Take a minute. Thank you. You do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, united as one with the citizens.
For Call to the Public, we have none signed up, so we'll move on.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got proclamations first.
No proclamations this time, but we did have one.
I have a proclamation, I have not a proclamation, but I have one.
We have one signed up, just.
It'd be good. Thank you. So, one of the announcements tonight, sorry about that. Just wanted to introduce our newest employee, Louis Doug Taylor. He will be our planner, and he really hit the ground running. I appreciate it a lot. I've seen the mountains out, and actually talked to him more than once. We were at the high school together on Saturday, so it's gonna be a real help to us in all of our planning zoning and our DRB and our workforce housing and on and on and on. So, it's a big responsibility, and we appreciate him applying and working for us. So, thank you, Doug, and welcome to the family. Thank you, sir. All right, now we will do Call to the Public. If you want to read that one you have, Ashley, appreciate it.
This was submitted by Claire Chaffee. This Call to the Public is in regard to selling Luke's residence. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As most of us know, the residents are being evicted by October 31st. They are part of the community, or they are part of the county, not the city, therefore the city is not responsible for them. I guess my questions are, number one, where do they buy groceries? Number two, do they attend events? Number three, where do they do their laundry? Number four, what do they use for transportation? There are more, but I think that's enough for now. They are still putting their money into the city, whether out of necessity or not. Now that SNAP has changed again, that will be a big issue for everyone. Will it hurt us all to give some money to these citizens to help them move and who knows where? They may as well be nonprofits. In closing, I ask that you please look deep into the pockets of the city to aid these citizens as they attempt to restart their lives, no matter what stage, age, health they are at. They are human beings and not ping pong balls to be lobbed back and forth trying to figure out who is supposed to help them. It doesn't matter who. Thank you for your time, Claire Chaffee.
Thank you. All right, on to general business, accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $227,752.27.
A second now.
We have motion, a second. Do you have any questions from any of them?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mel.
Just a couple of questions. The first, I'm looking at the expenses and I see, and I would like to know what's been done about it, if something that's been done. The gas, it seems like fuel cost has gone up. Is this due to the gas prices being up? And what kind of corrective action are being taken to make sure that, you know, we don't go low on budget or not achieve the budget? I don't know if these gas prices or the fuel prices were made based on the old gas prices and now gas prices has gone up by over a dollar since I think this budget was done per gallon. So, I would just like to get an information because I see the cost is way up. That's the first question I have.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Mayor and Council, some months ago, along with the budget before you were appointed to the Council, had budgeted money at the staff's request to reestablish the fuel farm that currently exists down at Public Works. What you see in the accounts payable is gasoline cards that employees use to fill city vehicles with at the pump, at the pump price. That probably is, we calculated a few months ago, it's probably about $60,000 a year more than what we would pay buying that on the spot and pumping it ourselves. So, Council authorized about $8,000 for us to replace the ancient fuel pumps that were down there and to clean the existing tanks out, and it also included a device that hooks up to software so that we could automate the, basically, the internal control of pumping gas and accounting for it. Unfortunately, the software company who we chose to use, recommended a firm to install the pumps for us, and it turned out that the vendor for the pump that we needed to interface with the software has been extremely slow at getting about doing it. I talked with Matt on, well, yesterday, on Monday, and we should have had delivered the final piece that we need to mount on the front to interface with the software. So, we're hoping with any luck sometime in the next week or so. We also had to bring in a local electrician because we had to rewire everything. We also had to replace regular electrical appliances, shall we say, with explosion-proof devices which are required by law on gasoline. So, all of that should be finished this week, and when that happens, we'll test the pumps. Once the pumps are working, we'll be removing the gasoline cards from all the employees and they'll be going back to the way we had it several years ago when everybody pumped at our fuel farm in Public Works. That should save us about $60,000 annually.
Thank you. That's good. But the other part of the question is, has the gasoline prices, the price of gasoline gone up? Has it affected what you had budgeted? I'm talking about the actual cost.
No, the current pump price is pretty much the same as it was at the beginning of the fiscal year, which was just July 1st. So, pump prices haven't changed materially. We will end up spending less on fuel as soon as we go back to using the fuel farm because we'll now be buying gas immediately diesel fuel at wholesale or on the spot, and that will definitely save us money. Plus, we are exempt from certain fuel taxes, which will be automatically taken off when we buy the fuel.
Okay, thank you. I have, okay.
Go ahead.
I have another question. On account 594046591, I just want to know, it's talking about merchandise, and I'd just like for that to be explained.
Mel, can you give us page number on that?
Yeah, I'm doing it from here. I think it's toward the end.
It's in the green line.
Okay. So, what are these? Are these, because this is an expense report, so are these product resale or actual expenses?
Yeah.
Because it says merchandise, yeah? Yes. That's the last page, toward the end.
Doug Graham runs the retail operation there in the gift shop, and that merchandise reflects the cost of merchandise that he buys for sale in the gift shop.
Okay, that's fine, but my question is, are these going in as expense?
This is cost of goods sold.
Cost of goods sold?
Yes.
So, okay, then you will have a P and L to show how much you sold and bought them?
Yeah, next month when you get your financial statement.
It will have the P and L and will show how much the cost, okay. Thank you. That answers that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $227,752.27. Roll call this.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to item two, approval of the consent agenda. We have five items, two over for minutes. One is a approval of resignation from the DRB, and two part permits, or one part permit, and what's the other one? Patio permit for a flipper. So, does anybody have anything they would like to discuss? Seeing on that, motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as listed, items A through E. Roll call this.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. All right, moving on, no old business this session, so we'll move on to new business. We'll start with item number three. This is discussion of possible approval of appointment of John Sky to the Designer Review Board. So, when I'm, we've got one person signed up, John to speak. I'll let you speak, and then I'll go to the Council. Go ahead, John.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Back again, as I will be for the next 40 or 50 years, I find a living in Bisbee and be involved in city politics and rebuilding Bisbee, as I have been. I was on the Designer Review Board previously. I feel like I was pretty effective on the board as I went to all the builds, checked them out personally before every meeting. Think I'm pretty fair. I don't, you know, utilize my friendships. I just vote the way that needs to be voted, in my opinion. So, I'm just asking for a chance to get back on. I'll keep reapplying. If I don't make it tonight, that's fine. Let's see, you know, I've got a pretty small board, so I'm just asking that you vote me in so I can continue to help out the community as I have been, and that's all.
Right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
So, open discussion, I'm gonna ask our liaison for the DRB to start off, and if you have some comments.
I did write a little statement here. As the City Councilperson of Ward 1, it is my duty and responsibility to represent and be receptive to the wishes of Ward 1 constituents. As a City Council liaison to the DRB, the same applies. I have received a number of letters, phone calls, from Ward 1 constituents concerning the appointment of Mr. Sky to DRB, none of which have been in favor of it. Most of the concerns have to do with the perception of potential conflict of interest problems if he were to be on the DRB. It is well known that Mr. Sky is very active in building construction business. There's nothing wrong with that, but it is important that all the members of the DRB remain perceived as impartial when considering building applications. I have also heard similar concerns from a few DRB members. The chairperson of the DRB is not in favor of his appointment. To date, I have not received any emails, phone calls, or personal comments pro Mr. Sky being appointed. I also have concern with perception of potential conflict of interest problems if Mr. Sky were to be on the DRB working in his present location. I appreciate that Mr. Sky's desire to be a service to the City of Bisbee. Perhaps there is another city board or committee that might be appropriate at this time for Mr. Sky to serve on. I will not be voting in favor of this appointment at this time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm going to address you directly, Mr. Sky. I admire your enthusiasm and your will to get back into the workings of the DRB, the workings of the city, and I encourage you to continue that. I would also encourage you to reflect on your past behavior and ask yourself if there are things that you can do that would make you a much more effective member of these boards. In my opinion, there are things that you can do to make yourself a more effective member of these boards. Until that happens, I don't feel that I can in good conscience vote for you to be back on the Designer Review Board, although I do hope that someday you get back there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I know John, and personally, I have no issue with you as a person, but the perception and the calls and the emails I've received as a councilperson who has been just recently appointed, I feel the same way as the other two members, and I want to just be honest with you, I won't be able to vote for you tonight.
So, a little explanation comes from the Mayor. I do have the power to either put somebody up for a nomination or not. I failed to, we had two old means, we had two qualified candidates, so I did. I pulled it off against the consent agenda because I felt they were important, that we addressed these, and we'd probably have gotten pulled anyway. So, with all that being said, I will also have to say I have a little bit of a heartburn with how many times John may have to get off the board and learn from some things that he's working on. We all had that happen to us. When I was on the DRB, I had to do that a couple of times, but it was just a couple of times when I was on it, because I didn't, it was just something I was doing in my house that needed DRB approval. In fact, as Mayor, I'm gonna go before them Wednesday night, so that even gets more sticky with it. But the point being is, much like John mentioned tonight, there's five of us, and when you have somebody leave the board, then you've only got six votes to send as a tying board instead of an automatic move. So, that, to me, creates a bit of a problem. If you, and there's nothing wrong with a contractor being there because they bring that expertise, but when that contractor brings many, many jobs for them, then I start to feel like that would be my one thing that I would have a little bit of problem with, was how it will affect the board and him having to accuse himself presenting it and then having other board members vote either for him or against him while he's presenting. So, that's a bit of a sticky with me, but I do feel that it's important if somebody wants to apply for a position, I'm more than happy to put them up because I feel that that's a good thing, and ultimately, the entire way on Council decides, so. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I move to approve the appointment of John Sky to the Designer Review Board.
Do I have a second? Very none, motion fails for a second. We'll move on to item number four, discussion of possible approval feedback of the appointment of Lord Gonal to the Designer Review Board. The second applicant to put in, do we have any discussion on this, anybody else?
I would say, Mr. Laurie is a very qualified person to be on the DRB. She studied historic preservation in Little Rock, so there's a lot of work there. Actually, got a section of the community approved for historical district in the neighborhood there in Little Rock. Did a number of building surveys there to do that academic, so I'm certainly in favor of her being on the Designer Review Board.
I received a couple of emails in her favor. Any other?
Yes, I also received some emails on behalf of Lady and our second denomination.
So, we gotta, we gotta have a number.
That's one.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of Laura Gonal to the Designer Review Board.
I second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Lord Gonal to the Designer Review Board. Roll call this.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, would you like?
You wanna hear it? Thank you, Mel. So, I, like I said, presented a proposal to you with a budget, but what we're proposing is a multi-week fine arts exhibition and then a two-day arts festival in the fall 2022, highlighting dozens of our local visual artists, musicians, and performers. We would also be offering free space during this festival to our local galleries and art nonprofits. During the ongoing COVID pandemic, artists in our community were and continue to be negatively financially impacted by gallery closures and event cancellations. From March 2020 to March of 2021, there was a financial loss of $15.2 billion across the arts and cultural sector in this country. This impact was felt clear as well. The funding from the American Rescue Plan Act offers us the opportunity to support our artists in a community that is identified worldwide as an artist community. I believe with that title, it brings a responsibility to support the artists, and an art festival of this caliber would be capable of doing just that. And we'll be joining other towns in Arizona doing this fairly normal practice. Examples include Mesa Arts Festival, Tempe Festival of the Arts, Scottsdale Arts Festival, Fountain Hills Festival of the Arts, some of which receive funding and support from their city government. I believe with your vote, we could easily create an amazing event that supports one of our most important resources, which is our artists, and create the long-term effect of elevating the reputation of Bisbee as an important artist community and cultural epicenter. So, like I said, we are just here in the capacity to answer questions. In front of you, you should have a budget. I will say that it hasn't particularly been fleshed out, you know, it's one of those things where we were given the opportunity to give a proposal, and we came up with something that's, you know, it's a little open-ended at the moment, but this was between the Arts Commission was the best that we could do at the moment, so we do stand behind it as a commission.
Thank you. Go ahead. Lou?
Mr. Schumacher, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I understand this is a tentative budget.
Very much so.
But would you and your commission be willing to submit a cost accounting after the fact to show how this money was spent?
100%.
Thank you.
And I also like to mention for the public that this is a matched funding. We would be using $15,000 of our own money. The Arts Commission does raise our own money, and we'd be asking for $15,000 of funding from the American Rescue Act, so.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
In your request, you show a spread from 15,000 to 20,000. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, sir, because it was tentative. There are always going to be costs that arise that we are not aware of, one of them being shuttles. That's something that I did talk to Ken Budge about. There may not be adequate parking and lull for the amount of people that we presume they come, and therefore, we would need additional funding for that, and that budget would have to be worked out within the Arts Commission to figure that out exactly. So, we were trying to show a level of flexibility.
Thank you. Other comments? Done, looks good. What I'd like to mention maybe is, I look at this as a, hopefully, a seed funding situation, where we fund this and seed this, and that you will make some revenue on this that you will put aside for future ones, so it isn't a one-time bang, and thank you all, and we hope it all works that way, but I would, you know, you could rely on this every year, but we would, I would love to see that. I think that's what your thought process is, but I wanted to bring that up. And, you know, if, since you are a part of the city, I mean, you have your own budget, this money just actually goes into your light item, into the Bisbee Arts Commission, where then it is totally, all the bills go to our Finance Director, where it's all flushed out right there, and it isn't like they're giving to a nonprofit and won't know where it's going.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make that, this isn't like one of our nonprofits, this is actually supporting one of our own in there, so just wanted to bring that up.
Well, one of the things that the Arts Commission has been very good at, and a lot of it's because of Sharon, her idea with the cigarette machine, is that we are very well at making money and self-funding in that way. We did believe that because this funding does come as a rescue grant because of COVID, we shouldn't, we should charge a minimum to the artists that would participate, but you'll see that we did work it out there, that we were charging something on, a commission on sales.
Yeah, a commission on sales.
Yeah. I do believe, I hope we can find you some pop-up chances. It all burned up, so maybe we can save some money.
That'd be good.
City Manager, just a second.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of comments. Number one, it's gonna be really nice to see that Chevrolet building being used. You know, we drive by it every day since we work on that street, and they put an extraordinary amount of work into that renovation, and it'd be nice to see it actually being used, so I'm looking forward to that. And I do believe, and we'll check with Public Works tomorrow on that, I know we got some time here, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm sure we still have some pump-ups left over from that previous event that we used them for, and so they're down at Public Works. I don't think, they all burned up in the fire.
So, anyway, I'm just looking for, maybe that will help fund the bus. We own the bus, but we have to pay for the person and the fuel, so we should be able to maybe work something out that way. So, anyway, it's a long ways off, I understand that, because you have to now put it out there so you can bring people from all over.
And this makes it really soon. One year is not a very long way to a festival.
No, no, no. Well, once you get that first one, then everybody's gonna be looking for it because it's gonna be so successful.
No, I don't want to speak to the City Manager, said about, you know, David Rose, the timing is impeccable. He has been working on his building, he's almost to completion, and he's been a huge supporter of the arts, so we're very fortunate that he's, you know, open to doing this project.
Right. All right, I've said my piece, so, you know, anything else? Okay, well, all right, I guess it's up to me. I move, oh gosh, did we do 15 or 20? We didn't really talk about 15.
15. 15.
That's what I put in for.
Hey, you said 15, so we'll have to go with the lower number.
You just gotta get that cigarette machine up, really start pulling.
It's doing as much as it needs to.
Okay. I move the way through the request from the Bisbee Arts Commission for $15,000 using ARPA Community Assistance Funds.
I second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve $15,000 to the Bisbee Arts Commission. Roll call this.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacaminos?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes, well, six here around.
Thank you very much.
The work begins.
Yeah, exactly. I said to my husband, I could get fired tonight.
Sorry, no such luck. All right, moving on to number six. This is discussion of possible approval of Resolution R-21-10, the resolution of the Mayor and Council of City of Bisbee approving the transfer of budget funds within the city of Bisbee fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. And it's Carrie, it's yourself.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution to change the budgeted amounts to cover departments that exceeded expenditure estimates due to unforeseen circumstances. State statutes prohibit spending more than stated amounts and prohibits us from increasing the budget, but we can't move budgeted amounts between funds to cover over expenditures. This past fiscal year, the City Manager Department went over estimate due to extra salary expense, and then the General Government went over due to required grant matches. Legal Services Department went over due to change in services and outside council fees, and the City Magistrate Department went over due to a revision in the Court of Magistrate charges. Additionally, a budgeted amount needs to be moved into the Housing Initiative Fund, which we just set up this past fiscal year, so we didn't have that in the budget, and we also need to move some into the debt service to. And we also need to move some into the debt service to cover the new financing for the Caterpillar equipment.
All righty, question. Yeah, well, raise that hand, okay, Mel. There you go.
I mean, all the line items you mentioned went over budget, over budget, over budget, because we did not, we did not foresee. I'm concerned about this, because that's, I believe that's the easy way, just to just say, well, we went over. Is this something that happens every year, or this has just happened this year? I'd like to know this.
Usually, I mean, every year, there's departments that expenses come up that we just didn't anticipate. You can't, you can't predict everything that's going to happen in a year. And we have to make these moves. If we don't make moves to cover these budget shortfalls, we can get a finding in a fine by the state. So they do allow us to move funds, well, not, I shouldn't say funds, they're budgeted numbers. It's just the amount that we budgeted, and we're revising the budgeted amounts, moving from departments that had extra to departments that went over. So while we did go over in some departments, most of the departments were well under. The general fund as a whole was $373,000 under budget.
So in general, if we're not going over the budget, as you say, it's just moving funds around in different areas. Shortfalls, so I think that's important to remember.
Is there a criteria, is there a criteria that you use to choose which department to move funds from, other than excess money?
Yeah, I mean, whichever one seems to have the most, that way we're not making multiple journal entries from moving little bits and pieces from different departments. So contingency always seems to, we really don't use contingency, very rarely. So that one had the most, and then garage, because we didn't replace one of the mechanics, so his salary wasn't there.
It was just last year, we took it through a fire.
Yeah, and they did have a lot extra, and that was mostly because we put in a lot for wildland fire expenses, and they didn't do any of the wildland fires.
Okay, thanks.
City manager.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Now I'm drawing a blank on what I was going to say. Anyway, forget it.
Well, the good thing is that overall, the whole budget came in under, our expenses came in under what the entire budget was budgeted for. So even though it's taken out of contingency, it's still, there's the bottom line, and the bottom line to me is we held it pretty hard there in the last little bit. So, yeah, I wish I could have the forethought to think of here in advance of where I'm going to have to spend, but I know that's, that things come up, that's why I have reserves, and that's why we do too, so. Anything else? Oh, yes, go ahead. You know, our city attorney's with us tonight, so everybody should.
When you're here, you want to say something.
Swing that camera so people actually know we have one. No, just kidding. Just kidding.
Mayor and council. Just as a little explanation, from a legal perspective, the budget is the best estimate that the departments can put together for the thousands of line items of individual expenditures that may or may not come up during the year. And a lot of times, those departments are held to a very strict standard, because, you know, any department would love to come in and say, yeah, I want to increase my budget 10%, you know, just to make sure that I have sufficient funds to cover anticipated things. But we want more of a realistic budgetary number, and which is why you also have a contingency amount, because under state law, the maximum amount that the city can spend at all is what the budget amount is. So if the total budget is $8 million, the city cannot expend more than $8 million. Otherwise, the city could incur fines and penalties from the state legislature. So what happens is that because of differences in different departments and things, you have that statutory authority to be able to move those around as long as you stay under that total number of 8 million. So that's the, the process is set up to accommodate for those changes and differences, because you can't foresee everything that's going to happen in a fiscal year period, you know. And last year was a good example of this, because of COVID, so many things changed. You had so many different municipalities that had to go out and do immediate procurements for technology so that they could conduct meetings virtually and do things like that. So there's a lot of things that have come up throughout the year that are not anticipated, that are not part of that initial budget. But even with that, you still can't go over that total budget amount that you established as a maximum budget for the city. That's where you run into an issue and a penalty with the state legislature, and that's what the statutes are put in place to govern and control. You know, and to the same, to the same thing, if the city sets a maximum budget of $8 million and receives, you know, if we would have received $3 million from the federal government for COVID relief, you can't just go out and spend that $3 million, because it would have put your expenditures over your 8 million, and you didn't budget for that. So then you have to carry that over to the next fiscal year to be able to include that in the budget.
It's the great state again, but no, but just real quick, quick question. I mean, you represent quite a few cities, you've been in cities yourself, so I guess wouldn't you say this is more normal than not, to make these adjustments at the end of the year?
Yeah, I would say that I haven't seen a, I haven't seen a city budget that hasn't required some type of budgetary transfer, especially when they're very tight budget. When you're dealing with a very tight margin, because you want, you want your departments to come in and give you a very realistic number for what your anticipated expenditures are going to be. And then, you know, the city manager is going to say, we need to make sure that these numbers are accurate and tight. You don't want, you don't want a budget that, at the end of the year, well, we didn't expend $1 million of our $8 million budget because we just inflated the numbers. You want that to be as close as possible, but with the understanding that there's going to be things that occur that happen throughout the year that you have no control over, that are going to cause some adjustments here and there. And I'd say, out of the, you know, seven or eight different municipalities I've represented over the last 15 years, I'd say at least 80% of the time, there are budgetary transfers to accommodate for changes and things like that.
Doesn't that occur also in school districts?
Yeah, every governmental-type entity that is required to establish a budget has to fall within those same statutory guidelines. You know, you can't just say, well, we're going to budget for $8 million, but, you know, we got some extra money from this or that, and we wanted to go spend this and that, and now we're going to, we're going to spend $10 million. You can't do that.
And I'm just going to add to what Joe said earlier. I've been around for about 36 budgets over the course of my career, and never, as a year gone by, that we haven't made some adjustments in budget. So we don't want, I mean, this is, this is important, it has to be done in order to stay compliant with state law. But at the same time, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that budgets are managed 52 weeks a year. And so that's what we're up for, where the answer is.
All right. Last comment I'd make is just for the general public, and all this is general fund, this is not any of our, this just deals with our general fund, correct?
They're not in the enterprise fund, so housing initiative and the debt service are like other funds?
Yeah, but that falls under our general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Just one last.
Okay.
Ask you just one. So would we try, like, for example, next year to maybe work on these budgets? So because, you know, I feel maybe a department does a good job in controlling the expenses. They have proposed a good budget that they are living within, and we have another department that may have not done so. So does this and this allow, for example, for a department not to be as cautious as the department who do a good job on controlling the expenses? That would be my last question.
I would say the expenses that put these departments over were out of the ordinary expenses. They weren't, I mean, we usually use the budget from the previous year and the financials, and use that as a way to project what we're going to need next year. But these were things that were not, like the municipal portfolios, we didn't know that they were going to revise their fees. So we had used the previous several years when we budgeted that, and we didn't know that they were going to revise their charges.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just, I remember now what I was going to tell you earlier.
I know, we stood. He was waiting for me to remember.
If I was, yeah, thank you, Mel.
Yeah.
One thing too, that I think everybody needs to keep in mind too, is that at the end of fiscal year, everything goes back to zero. Okay? We start, we start out with a new budget. If there's any money left over from the prior year, it is not carried over in the general fund or any other fund. So when we do budget, we budget starting from zero. So nobody gets rewarded for not spending money, and nobody gets penalized for spending too much money. What they do get is they do get a little bit better oversight if the over expenditures result in blowing their budget. So, and, you know, as tight as we've been controlling budgets over the last few years, you know, I don't foresee that happening, but, you know, these folks have to come in and see me if they're going to spend more than a hundred bucks. So if they end up.
It's your fault then.
Yeah.
Exactly. That was what I was about to say. So we have to keep in mind that there are several steps involved in the process of spending the money once it's been budgeted. And back to my earlier comment that that occurs 52 weeks a year.
That's what I wanted to figure, thank you.
Yeah, it, you know, I mean, that's, it's everybody's responsibility, but the buck stops here.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Wanted to add one more thing, to kind of give an example of, you know, from a legal perspective. We don't know what notices are claimed and legal issues are going to come up in a 12-month period of time. We can't foresee the future, so, you know, we could have no notices are claimed in a six-month period of time, or we could have 10 or 12 notices are claimed. The same goes for, for example, with, you know, the fire department, PD, or Public Works. If there's an accident and a vehicle gets damaged, it wasn't anticipated, you have to get that vehicle back on the road, you have to have, and you incur those expenses that are completely unknown at the time you're doing your budget. But you have to, legally, you have to address it. You can't just say, well, we got this legal issue, we got sued, we're not going to respond to it because it's going to cost us extra money. We have to address those issues as they come up. And you don't know what that may or may not be at the time of budget. You can use your historical records and look back, historically, we've seen this, this, and this, and you do your best, your best estimate as to those budgets. But those are examples of why you could see differences in budgets, because as a municipality, you don't know what's going to happen during that year that could affect the workload or change the direction of a given department or issue. Another example is if you have a flood that comes down and it damages the roadway. You have to fix that roadway. That wasn't something that was budgeted, but you have to work within what you can and can't do, and you have to be able to make those adjustments.
No, I respect what you're saying, Joe, but in any budgeting, I've done it for 30, 40 years of my life, you always put, you always make assumptions. Budgets, like you said, you can't guess 100%, but you can make assumption, and you, in each budget, even $100, you make an assumption for $110 for unforeseen situations. So when you say you can, yes, you can, with an assumption. I'm not saying, and if you don't spend it, it's good, it goes back to the, to the fund. But budgeting, yes, you can make assumptions. I've done them a million times. So I'm not just saying you're wrong about not unforeseen, but you can make assumptions and make sure that you work within that budget. That's all about it.
All right. I think we're going to get a proposed motion here. I move to approve resolution R-21-10, approving the transfer of budget amounts within the city of Bisbee fiscal year 2020-2021 budget.
I second that.
Motion is second to approve wire number six, which is resolution R-21-10. Roll call please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
No.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 5-1. Moving on, this is item number seven. This is a discussion possible approval to enter into agreement with the state of Arizona, through the Arizona Department of Administration and Next Gen Communications and the city of Bisbee Police Department to implement NG 911, and to provide a statewide public safety-grade emergency service, so it's internet protocol, IP, network to deploy the national emergency number for the state's 911 program that connects Arizona Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP.
That's a piece of.
That was a, you really, you really, you make me read along with this.
I think you missed something.
Uh, gee, good job, eh?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is a, this was a contract that was sent to us, forwarded over to legal to take a look at. It just has to do with, again, granted, this access for our 911 services and our most recent upgrade. There's no financial cost, it's just more or less a formality, it's my understanding.
Allows us to have the 911 system work for us, right?
Correct. The 911 system we currently have, that we upgraded, I think, two years ago with Mayor, with Mayor and Council's approval, this, like I said, this is just a formality to allow us to continue to use the stuff where we have.
So it's the same thing?
Yeah, nothing, nothing's changed.
Okay.
Okay, now discussions, any further questions? Don't let somebody else make the motion.
Move to approve. Has agenda eyes.
You have anything to say, Andrew?
Yes, I have. No, I was just observing that it took a while to read the intro.
I move to approve, this is agenda item number seven, has agenda size. I've forgotten that before. All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you all. Refer to item number seven as a agenda. Roll call please.
Who was the, I'm sorry, who was the second?
I second.
Thank you, I'm sorry, my apologies. Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, this is item number eight. There's a lot of paper there, it is. This is basically a discussion of possible approval to issue a purchase order for pickup trucks from Public Works Department. Mr. Harold, our Public Works here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you today is a agenda to issue a purchase order, so we aren't actually entering into a lease yet. So this is a purchase order that would be issued to O'Reilly's Commercial and Fleet, a automobile dealer in Tucson that does, is under a cooperatively, cooperatively agreed upon contract to purchase three vehicles, or order three vehicles, I should say, we're not purchasing, we're ordering three vehicles. Two of those vehicles are three-quarter ton full-wheel-drive vehicles, truck pickup trucks, and one is a half-ton pickup truck two-wheel drive. One vehicle would be issued to the streets department, one is issued to the wastewater collection department, and the other is issued to our parks department. collection department, and the other is issued to our parks department. We, during the budgeting process, planned for this order. We planned with the, planned with using Enterprise. During the process, we did research and we found that we were able to order these vehicles for less money through using General Motors and O'Reilly's. We, if I can pull up my, I can tell you exactly how much we're saving. So using the, using Enterprise, we budgeted for each three-quarter ton vehicle to be ordered at a $722.75 per month, so that would be times two. And then the half-ton vehicle was budgeted for $549.86. Again, doing our research and working with General Motors, we were able to order those three-quarter ton, or with your approval, we will be able to order those three-quarter ton pickups at $566.11 each, so that's times two. And then the half-ton vehicle is $432.18. That essentially saves us about $430.96 from what we budgeted. So, the way I.
Per month.
Per month. So what I'd like to say is, we're essentially getting one for free. Well, not, but we are, we budgeted, we budgeted for more. The vehicles that we are replacing, one street's vehicle was one that we did acquire from Enterprise, that was on that one-year lease, that vehicle has been returned, so we don't even have that vehicle in our fleet anymore. So we, we would be replacing that vehicle. That vehicle was assigned to our streets department, that was a three-quarter ton four-wheel drive. We would also be replacing a 2003 Chevy. That vehicle is assigned to our wastewater department, that has currently 213,024 miles. It is a three-quarter ton four-wheel drive. The vehicle that we would be replacing from, with our parks department is a 2004 GMC. That vehicle has 220,000 miles, 220, 200 miles. Again, that is assigned to our parks department. I would, speaking more on the vehicles and why we're ordering, what we're requesting to order. The streets department and wastewater department, we are requesting those three-quarter ton four-wheel drive vehicles because of our winter time, we need, we need to have four-wheel drive vehicles for our snow time. Those vehicles also haul our skid steer and our mini excavator, definitely need three-quarter ton vehicles to haul those around. And then the parks department is just, they have a very old vehicle that is, and not in good condition, it's just hanging on. With that, I suppose I'll answer any questions, Joe, on my head.
On the three-quarter ton trucks, diesel or gas?
They're gas vehicles.
Okay, Hannah, go ahead.
So the 2500 is a good size. So, you know, for the things that you would use it for, do you really need four-wheel drive?
I would absolutely say yes. We, the, those are the only two pickups that we have in our fleet that are four-wheel drive. So if we don't have four-wheel drive vehicles during the winter time of snow, we would, we would be struggling without four-wheel drive vehicles.
Because I don't think the police department or the fire department have four-wheel drive, they're out on the roads all the time. And for the 213,000 miles on the one vehicle, that fire department could still get 100,000 miles on it.
Just broke you.
That's what I was gonna say, just like him.
I would suggest that the, the vehicle that we're talking about, 213, it's, we've had to pull it from the traffic circle a couple of times because it's, it's broken down on us. We've repaired it, but I would strongly, I would strongly suggest that that vehicle is at its end of life and it needs to be repaired, it needs to be replaced. Our plan for these vehicles is to sell them either at an auction that we utilize with the police department or an online auction, but we do plan on recouping some money on it.
The one?
Just another quick question. Does Public Works have any chains that they could use on the rare occasion that we do have snow?
Snow chains? Hmm, I don't believe we have any right now, but that's something that we can acquire.
It's probably cheaper than little vehicles.
I'm sorry.
Nothing.
One thing I did wanna, that word lease comes up, but it's a lease to buy.
Correct. It is, it is, so the intent, so I did provide you all with a, some documents from General Motors Financial, that is a, a, a copy of, so it's a sample of the lease, so we aren't entering, I'm not requesting or approval to enter into a lease at this time, only the, to issue a purchase order. What I did provide you was a sample of the lease agreement. Once those vehicles are manufactured, because they do have to be manufactured, they aren't on the lot, so they would have to be manufactured by General Motors. Once the, O'Reilly's receives those vehicles, then it is, it would, I would come back for approval to enter into a lease purchase agreement with General Motors Financial. The sample I provided you would be what I would present to you all at the time, if approved. It's a six-year lease, with a $1 to purchase at the end of that lease. But again, it's, we aren't requesting to enter into that lease at this time, just to issue a purchase order so that those vehicles can be ordered.
I just want to make the difference between Enterprise, at the end of Enterprise, the vehicle just goes away.
Yes.
This one does stay in our, our inventory.
Yes, and will stay within our fleet. Will stay within our.
Being a resident of Old Bisbee, I can see, definitely the four-wheel drive in the winter time over there. All my vehicles are four-wheel drive. If you're down with Sunbelt, San Jose, we don't get a (inaudible). Up in Old Bisbee, we kill a lot of them.
All right. Mel, go ahead. And now, I'm gonna go.
By the end of the lease, how much would this, I mean, I like the, you know, the number 72 for what it looks, what would the total cost be?
Yeah, let me, let me pull that up my computer, apologize.
Are you talking about some?
Yeah, absolutely. So at the end of the lease, and again, I apologize, my computer wants to sleep on me. The half-ton vehicle that would be assigned to the parks department is, let's see, the total amount that would be financed, so the cost of the vehicle is $27,756. If we finance, if approved and we go through GM Financial, that interest rate is at 4.378%. And, I apologize, but I don't have the total on there.
Seventy-two thousand. For the two.
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand. It's on the cover sheet.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-six, two, seventy-nine.
That's the three-quarters. The half-ton is, the half-ton is $27,756.
So zero, about ninety-nine thousand.
For all, for all three?
Yes.
And the question on the interest rate, couldn't we, because, you know, like, I'm getting, I just got the card, almost zero percent interest, why are we paying 4.73?
There's a cooperatively bid contract, it's a government contract.
I'll tell you why, because on a state contract, if you look at what, the amount they give you, if you look at these contracts, they knock it down about ten to fifteen thousand dollars, ten thousand off of the lease price. Off the purchase, off the sticker, I should say. Steve, I think you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I know. I gotta take care of my.
Yes.
I see, I see where I stand. Yeah, just a couple things. First of all, I know Mrs. Klein's comment was half-ton cheap, but the trucking parks really needs a decent burial. And so I can, I can vouch, seeing it day after day, that it's overdue. That was 200,000 very hard miles that they put on that vehicle, so. And then I did wanna also, I think the mayor alluded to this as well, that the buyout on these vehicles is a dollar, and which is typical of, this goes back to more typical patterns that you remember from our past purchase experiences. You know, for light trucks and sedans, we've typically gone with a five-year lease purchase and we generally kept them ten or more years, unlike the Enterprise lease program where you just keep paying and paying and paying. I mean, I realize they, they give you the financial analysis and it's supposed to work out better for us, but when I don't stop paying cash, I spend more money. And most of our vehicles are well enough cared for in our own fleet service center that, that we get good life out of them. So sometimes we push the envelope, like we did with garbage trucks, but, but with these, I think, these are being replaced at the right time. The two 2500s are being replaced at the right time because we're not paying the higher lease payment anymore, and the other one just because it's, it's seen better days and somebody, somebody enjoys using this or daily driver around town when they buy for the launch.
Just one last question to Steve, why, why don't we go that route with the, with the Enterprise, maybe go to purchase to buy? I mean, you just said that's the better way to go.
Well, because Enterprise has a buyout figure, but it's not a dollar.
Okay.
Okay? They, they sell you the vehicle at what they consider the residual value of the car. And then just one more item, mayor, that I think, you know, the reason that we're asking for permission to order and not to enter the lease is because we're not a hundred percent sure we're gonna get these.
That is very true.
The situation, yeah.
Let's say you get it in the center, you get in the queue, so we'll see what happens if we do it tonight. Yes.
And just a little explanation with regard to the procurement process, you know, because unfortunately, a municipality can't just go out and, and purchase and, and get a vehicle at the dealership and get the, you know, the interest rates that they offer as incentives and things like that. These have to be procured, either the city has to do its own RFP, request for proposal, or RFQ, request for qualifications for, for a proposal, or we can, what's called, using a piggyback off a cooperative purchase agreement. That's where another government entity has already gone out and bid for these services or goods and has language in that contract that other government entities are allowed to use that. And a lot of times, you're, you're gonna get different rates because, for example, GM doesn't know how many government entities may or may not want to use that contract to purchase the vehicles, and at the time they, they bid that out, they don't know what the interest rates are gonna be in a year or two during the period of that, that open contract. So that's kind of what affects some of those rates as well.
Thank you for the explanation, makes sense, thank you.
I mean, if I had one suggestion for the city manager, would be, if we have a little savings on this, we could actually buy a snow blower, could attach to one. Ah, there you go.
For that one day of snow.
The last day I saw it, I saw our grader go along the road. Not grader, it's a tough way to plow snow.
Mr. Mayor Mel will appreciate this, it's not anybody.
But yeah, this one, I appreciate you, had it in the budget, thank you, that's all. Not spending, so have your money, thank you.
Well, we did best one, yes, so, anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
I move to approve first order for three truck, three pickup trucks, to O'Reilly Commercial and Fleet, for three pickup trucks.
Second? Motion and a second for item number, agenda item number eight, to purchase the three pickup trucks through O'Reilly Commercial. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes, you have a six-zero. Okay, we got it. Item number nine, this will be a discussion of possible approval of the One Arizona Distribution of Opioid Sell Funds Agreement. This is from our city attorney, Mr. Estes.
Mayor and council, this should only take an hour or two to go through.
It's money.
It's money. We don't know how much, we don't know when, but there could be money at the, at the end. Just, most councilmembers will recall, and for councilmember Sally's history, there's been longstanding, multiple-year national litigation involving opioid crisis and allegations that, you know, big pharma and distributors pushed these drugs on, on communities and caused a lot of problems with opioid abuse mitigation. And we're getting close to a settlement in those cases, and because they were class-action cases, every municipality throughout the entire country is a potential class member recipient of those ultimate settlement funds. And so what the, the state has been taking the lead on doing the negotiations and really the driver of trying to get these cases settled. And you may recall that it was around November or December of last year, the state sent out this memorandum of understanding to all the different municipalities, asking for everybody to, to review the proposed distributions of any ultimate settlement funds that would come into the state and sign off on that. And it was a non-binding MOU, it was something that they needed to be able to take back to the table to say, look, we, we've got consensus here in Arizona, this is how we're going to distribute whatever funds may or may not come to Arizona. And they ended up getting ninety-one of the, or ninety of the ninety-one counties and municipalities to sign on to that agreement. I do not know the one that was called out, I haven't, haven't been able to find that one. I don't think they want to acknowledge it and, but anyways, we're getting close to a settlement in those cases. We've got potential settlements that are pending court approval, the courts have to approve them, and then the, the parties, the participating parties, municipalities, then have to sign off. So this is a, a multi-pronged process where one, we have the One Arizona Opioid Agreement, where we, this is now a binding agreement to where we acknowledge and agree to how the funds will be distributed within the state of Arizona, and those numbers didn't change from last year, they're the same percentages and things. So we have this on for, for approval to be able to sign on and agree to that. If we don't do that, we're not entitled to receive any funds. And then once the, the two main cases have, have settlements pending, once those are ready to be able to be approved, then we have to come back and also get council approval to sign on to those settlements. And if we don't sign on to those settlements, we don't get any funds. And I can just tell you that, you know, even, the numbers look enormous, you know, you're talking almost 20 billion in one case and nine billion in another case, but in one case it could be paid out over eighteen years, the other case could be paid out over nine years. The state is estimating somewhere of potentially receiving $549 million as the state's 1/50th share of whatever that number is. And then the agreement that's in the, in the packet explains how those funds would be distributed throughout the, throughout the state with, of course, you know, the, the most, figure one. The state getting forty-four percent of the funds and then fifty-six being distributed out to the, the counties and municipalities, and of course, with the, the counties getting the lion's share of that. And I think the reason that was done is because of the health districts and the cost associated with the opioid epidemic were more proportionally borne by the counties than the individual municipalities. And it was a multi-pronged approach that they looked at when coming up with those, those figures and numbers. So all we're asking for tonight is approval to, to sign the agreement with the state of Arizona Attorney General's Office for the One Opioid Agreement to the distribution, and then once we get to the point where we could bring, and they have more solid numbers and agreements on the set. more solid numbers and agreements on settlements, we'll bring those back to, to council to get approval to sign on to those as well. Are there any questions?
Brian, help.
Do you have any idea what would be based the amount that each city or county receives, based on the population, based on, I mean, what, 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 what do you gotta factor in? Like, when you say five hundred million for the state of Arizona? So, do you have any, I'm sure.
I, I, I went through and, you know, and I included that calculation in, uh, in the other, so if the state receives five hundred and forty-nine million,
Yes.
and the, the counties get fifty-six percent of that, and Cochise County.
Gets sixty-three percent.
Gets, let's see, and each county gets a different percentage. And of course, Maricopa County getting the largest percentage.
Or they have the most population.
So the allocation to Cochise County is one point eight-five-five percent of that fifty-six percent. And then Bisbee gets, uh, uh, yeah, three point four-seven percent. Um, so I estimated, if, if you use the numbers of five hundred and forty-nine million, extrapolating that out to the best I can do, because I went to law school, avoid math. There was no math class in law school. Ultimately, the city could be looking at approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in funds. And those are restricted funds that have to be used for, uh,
Treatment, uh.
Treatment, education, different things associated with the opioid epidemic.
Well, thank you.
Uh, city manager.
I, I went to engineering school and I figured it closer to two hundred thousand.
Come on, pass the deal, hold it, you don't have no budget.
I went to preschool and I'm.
I, I always figured it's, it's better to expect a lower.
Yes.
You have to get a bigger.
I agree.
That's, that's the attorney. Anybody have any problem taking money, we are?
No.
We aren't one of the, never mind, I would say. Yeah, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll move to approve the One Arizona Just Production of the Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement.
Second.
Motion of the second to approve item number nine, the Arizona One Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement. I don't think this requires a roll call, does it? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, aye. Ayes, have it. So move. Uh, on the ten, city managers, you've got one.
Thank you, Mayor, I actually have several items tonight. Um, the first item, um, is, uh, Jesus, go ahead. Um, because in October of twenty-seventeen, we had a fire, we lost our flag. We've been without a flag ever since until tonight.
Beautiful.
Nineteen oh-two.
So, next year, at the parade of flags at the conference, Anna can carry a flag.
But no award.
And, and, and just because I'm not a hundred percent confident in you guys, I bought two. Just in case you burn the place down there.
Do you have a safety valve, Mayor?
I'll keep it under my bed if I have to.
Pep offside.
No, I've kind of felt, even, even in the years that I worked up north, when I went to the conference and just didn't have a flag, I thought, I got a little empty, but in my, so, it's kind of nice to be back in the game, so. Okay, um. Uh, just an update, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was while we were discussing the, uh, accounts payable, um, uh, it was mentioned that, uh, when we had the water restored to this building, uh, we got hit with a rather large charge, uh, from Arizona Water Company. And, uh, so for the last few weeks, uh, I've been going back and forth with, uh, Fred Schneider, who some of you remember, uh, used to be the chief engineer and now president of the company. Um, they basically, uh, charged us a thousand dollars in, in water usage fees, um, and another thirteen hundred dollars or so, uh, in, in to, uh, uh, for deposit, like, we never had an account with them before. Um, so, I wasn't able to talk to, talk them out of the deposit, because eventually, we'll move out of here and we'll get it back, I suppose. Um, but, uh, we negotiated the price down, uh, the usage fees from a thousand dollars to one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. So, uh, our, so we're not over on our budget anymore. Uh, wha- what remains to be seen is whether they refund us or whether they just give us credit for the next year. So, because that's about seven months' worth of, uh, of weapons here on this meeting, so. Just thought you'd like to know that. Um, also, um, the demolition on, uh, this former city hall building at one eighteen Arizona Street will commence sometime next week. Um, since Monday's a holiday, um, we're thinking not Monday. But, uh, Jesus is gonna be, uh, in touch with them to get a little better read on when they're gonna mobilize uh, at the site to start doing the demo. Uh, we do have an engineer's report, um, from an engineer that was recommended to us, a structural act, um, and who, who believes like we do that we can soft cut around the entryway facade of the city hall building uh, and save it. Uh, but as we stated before, there's no guarantees. Uh, that's, that's the way we will proceed. Um, actually, the, uh, the, the structural engineer, uh, came up with a, uh, fairly similar conclusion to what we came up with because just noticing that some of the stuff that could have burned, uh, and didn't, uh, led us to believe that the heat hadn't got to that part of the building quite as much as it had to other parts where you see much more noticeable deterioration. Um, so, like I say, we could, we could soft cut it and move everything out of the way, and it could fall under its own weight. If it does, well, we try. Uh, but we're really hopeful, uh, that we can save that part of the building because in my conversations with people around the community, especially our, our neighbors in Warren, um, they, they really wanted to save something. And, and so hopefully, we can, we can save that important part of the building, it's the entryway, and, and and hopefully, uh, do something nice around it as we proceed forward. Um, the, uh, um, last, for the last couple of weeks, but more particularly last Thursday, um, it, it, almost all of you, if not all of you, have noticed that there has been an issue with the, um, uh, Mobile Home Park, uh, in Donbuy. Um, and, uh, so, um, I have met with a, a couple of people who have interest uh, in helping people in the Mobile Home Park, uh, to, uh, transition out of the Mobile Home Park and with some degree of, of, uh, certainty, and, uh, so with the help of Seago, who has a housing department, uh, we were able to provide, uh, the residents of that park with a relocation assistance form that they can fill out. Um, the relocation assistance will move them to another place, a certain fee that's determined by the state of Arizona. Uh, if they can move their dwelling unit, then there's an additional amount that they can apply for to move that dwelling unit to another location. Strictly between them and the, in the state housing department, uh, but, but they have the information now, and, uh, so, um, we also, uh, when I say we, um, I met with the two folks uh, that are dealing with Mobile Home Park and, uh, Mr. Pollock also, uh, make certain, Lou's been working on this too, he had joined me at the meeting. Um, we also did give them a, an emergency assistance form, um, uh, similar to the ones that you, uh, dealt with the last council, well, special meeting last Thursday, I'm sorry. Um, and so I don't know if they're gonna apply for emergency assistance, I did tell them that, you know, they got the whole three-page form, they have to be very specific about that, what they want to do with the money. Uh, it's not just, uh, free money, but, uh, uh, if, if they need it for something, then they need to be specific, and the, and I did tell them that if they do that, the council will, uh, take it under consideration, so. So that's out there too, and, uh, and I know, uh, Lou has met with the housing authority, and I'll let him speak to that if he wishes. Um, but, uh, with that, the bottom line is, what that means is, is that, um, we are doing whatever we can, uh, to help them transition, um, through, uh, their current dilemma into hopefully something, um, a little bit better. And I know there was one, uh, call to the public on that, so, um, Claire, I hope you're still on. And, uh, so, you know, we're not, we're not necessarily coming to the rescue, but we're making uh, transition out of there as painless as possible. One thing I did forget to mention, there is a formal complaint that can be, uh, processed by the state, same department, same people, uh, in, in the event that the, uh, landlord, if I can use that term, uh, doesn't give them a reasonable amount of time to find out arrangements for living. Uh, under state law, that's a hundred and eighty days, so. They are aware, they know they have to file a complaint, um, and hopefully, somebody will do that, and that will benefit all of the residents of Trail Park, so. Um, oh, and just, well, can, can I yield a minute to Lou, Lou, do you wanna add anything?
Sure, yeah, go ahead. I met today with representatives from, well, the need of Laca with the housing authority, and two people from CCAP, Southeast Arizona Community Assistance Program. And they outlined all of the criteria that would be required for those folks to also participate for funding. And they're gonna pass that on to the city manager and myself tomorrow. And we'll share that, well, I'll share that information with the advocates in the community who have been the conduit to the folks who live there, so that they know what needs to be done to get additional funding from that organization.
Yeah, thank you, Lou. Um, I, I knew he was meeting this afternoon, but we didn't have a chance to talk after, so. I think, uh, I, I don't know how much more assistance is out there. Um, you know, obviously, cities and towns are not in the business of housing. Uh, but we've helped to marshal resources at the county and state level that can provide some assistance to that community, so. Um, if anybody needs to know anything else, they're welcome to contact my office in Warren. Um, just one more thing, um, uh, at the next council meeting, on the agenda will be the six-month evaluation of the city manager. Yeah, it's been six months. Um, so, um, uh, tentatively, I have put that item on the agenda, uh, in keeping with, um, the format that I've used for a good number of years now. Uh, I prefer to do that, uh, evaluation in public. Um, I will have some information, uh, to share with you regarding the activities of the last six months, the good, the bad, the ugly. And, uh, and then we can have a conversation after that, and, uh, and hopefully, you'll keep me for another six months. So, just so you know, so you, I, I, I never did, and I don't feel that it's necessary to do uh, formal questionnaires, any of that stuff, but I think you folks are out there day to day, uh, I'm out there day to day. Uh, you get feedback from the community about how we're doing. Um, you know, the, the, more than anything else, I, I try to represent what we're doing, not what I'm doing. Um, and, uh, so, it would be a good opportunity to review, uh, the last six months and, and a, and a also an opportunity, if you wish, uh, to provide some information for the time we have. Uh, and I will add just one more thing to that, I think you, I don't think there's been a strategic planning session here in a good number of years, and, uh, if I, if I don't see any strenuous objection to doing so, uh, we would like to start planning one for sometime around the first of the year, so. Something to look forward to.
Totally agree.
If you, uh, if you have any suggestions, uh, you know, please, please let me know. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you for that, uh, thank you, um, for following up with, with that. If I wanna add anything to it, it's just people understand, the people who are affected are the ones that have to fill out the forms, we can't do it for them, so. We'll, we'll try to give them everything that they can do.
Seago will help if they're, if they're needed.
Yeah, yeah, alright, um, anything else, we'll, uh, motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Chair, determine to aye.